All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us for the Baltimore City Schools Commissioner Application Information Session. This round of applications will be closing on September the twenty ninth, which is tomorrow. So we wanted to make sure that we were gathering together to allow all of you to ask any questions that you had. I mean, give and create a space where we can get additional information that you might not see. Or just know about before you make this really important decision to be a part of something that's so important. As it impacts the youth of Baltimore City and Baltimore City Public Schools. So on our agenda today, we're going to start with our welcome. We're going to introduce the folks that will be talking with everyone tonight. From there, we're going to go over the introduction to Baltimore City School Board. That will be done by Dr. Jennifer Jenkins. From there, we'll talk about mayoral considerations on behalf of Mayor Scott and the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. The candidate selection process, and then we will have an awesome Q and A with our current sitting commissioner, Robert Sally. I am Noa Wege. I am the Chief of Policy and Partnership to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. I'll pass it over to Dr. Jenkins.
I am Dr. Jennifer Jenkins, and I am the Board Executive Officer for Baltimore City Schools. So I support the board through many different means, but certainly through our office.
And our current sitting commissioner?
Everybody, I'm Robert Sally. I serve as a school board commissioner for Baltimore City Public Schools. We serve at large, so each and every student in each and every family in Baltimore City is represented by each commissioner. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight with all of you guys.
Thank you so much. We're going to get right into it, and I will pass it over to our Board Executive Officer, Dr. Jennifer Jenkins.
Hey, welcome. So going through the slides, you're just talking about the role of commissioners and as well as the role that we play in the district and how we support through the board office. So next slide, thank you. The role of the school board is varied. The school board is a governing body that represents district residents and manages public schools. The school board represents the interests of those who live within the district, and we do this by creating and adopting district policies, hiring the superintendent overseeing board meetings and taking actions that serve students that align with the priorities of our district. We oversee the annual budget and approve bargaining unit contracts. We advocate for a legislative platform, overall support, and hold the district accountable to meet goals. We listen to the community voice and take it into account in decision making. And very importantly, adopt policies and regulations to support district work and guide staff. Slide three, our next slide. And the vision of city schools is to create safe learning environments where students can receive a diverse and inclusive education, equipping them for success. And the mission is to provide a quality education focusing on the total development of every child to equip students with life skills and an academic foundation that helps them to contribute to our society. Next slide. And then our priorities, you can see that we have several priorities here. We'll have two slides for this, but you can see in priority one, it's around effective and rigorous instruction that engages and prepares students to be independent, creative, and compassionate leaders. Priority two is around actively recruiting and retaining and supporting qualified educators, administrators, and staff who are prepared to accelerate the personal growth and academic excellence of every student. And priority three, we're looking to have high-quality, modernized facilities and resources that support the success of our students and support our educators, administrators, and staff. Priority four, effectively engaging all stakeholders, which include parents and families, and to support their child's education and also engaging with community partners who will all contribute to student success. And then in priority five, so I'm going to move this around just a little bit for myself. Good. And priority five, just providing equal access to district services and resources. Once again, ensuring success for our students. Priority six is around increasing the number of educational programs of all types and levels throughout the city. And again, ensuring that our schools, including all of our charters, that our students there have access to high-quality educational experiences. And then our seventh priority, just that we're continuing towards equity at all levels. And we do this by implementing policies and practices and procedures that always create that welcoming and inclusive environment for our students. Next slide. Good. And then we can see the difference between government and governance and management here. So as you can see on the left, some of the things that we do for governance, that we're setting vision and mission, as I mentioned before. We just looked at the priorities. Some of the things that the board also does is they evaluate the CEO as well as select the CEO. And that difference, that differs from the management of the system that you can see on the right side. So looking at the focused and individual department actions. So where we're looking at the whole system in governance, the management piece is being more specific and looking at those different pieces and how this looks day to day. When we look at setting vision in governance, what happens over in the management side? It's the day-to-day operations and so forth. So sending those big, high-level goals and priorities, what do those look like and break down into for the management piece of it? And so you can see the different pieces that the board does and what the site, what our staff in the district also does to support those goals. And then if we look at policy adoption, review, evaluation, when we look at our management side and our staff side, although the board develops and adopts these policies, when we look at what the staff does, like what does this look like when we implement it? What does it look like truly in a school at the high level? At the board, this is what we're going to implement as the policy that we think is going to support and help student learning. And then on our staff side, the management piece, what do we actually do to implement this and put this into into each one of our schools to impact our students? Looking at bargaining contracts, again, we're looking at final approval of those contracts. And then specifically on our staff side, we've got folks who are negotiating the nuances of those contracts and going back and forth, and then we look at it at the end and then do that final approval. And the governance side again, looking at budgets. And then we, from the management side, just administering and approving those budgets. So you can see back and forth how it's a high-level piece of governance from the board and then what our staff side does to put those into action. Some of the other things that we're doing from the governance side, appoint, the appointment of all certificated staff. You'll hear this in the board meetings as we do our PEP agenda, that any of those staff who are in those higher-level positions, that those are all being approved by the board. And then, of course, on our staff side, that they're doing the interviews and also bringing it to the board for approval. We look at identifying resources from the board's side and then and getting those into place, and then with our staff looks at managing those. And then we're always monitoring student achievement from the board's side, seeing what's happening with our students. You'll see a lot of presentations done at the board so that we can determine, you know, what is this looking like in our schools? And then as we look at communications, always making sure we're bringing those to, those needs and concerns to our CEO, as well as myself, and then our staff side for management, just communicating with members of the CEO's staff. So you see the two pieces work very hand-in-hand, very high-level on the board's side. And then again, breaking that down and seeing what that looks like day-to-day for our CEOs or staff side. So we do a lot, you would see that again from the board's side. Thank you. Next slide. So Blueprint for Success, we have four major priorities that we're looking at are goals that relate to our seven priorities. So four goals, and they are around wholeness. And so we're really looking at defining what wholeness is for our students. And so that's one of the things that our board, we've developed a new committee to address this. It's called Safety and Wholeness, and so it is brand new this year. And it's an answer to concerns that were brought up from both the student's side, the school's side, parents, and so forth. And so one of our big goals is just about that piece here and is around that wholeness. So we have a whole committee dedicated to that. You can see the literacy. Although there's literacy in all of our content areas, we're talking specifically here about ELA, English Language Arts, as well as literacy and raising how our students are performing on the state assessment there. And that just gives us a good point of if the things that we're implementing within the district are really working and what we can do to continuously improve in that area. And the focus isn't just on our earlier grades, which is incredibly important, but it's really all of our students that, you know, our board is looking at. And so this is one of our big goals here, as well as our third goal here, increasing the four-year graduation rate. We're at seventy-six percent, and we know in districts around, you know, the country, around our state, this tends to be a little bit higher. But I think seeing that growth and the improvement over the years has been really encouraging and supporting our kids to make it through high school and be able to go on to post-secondary, either college or career. And so we're looking at continually growing that goal. So we're looking at this as as the rate looking for four-year graduation rate. And then our last one is around the MCAP. It's just, it's math and algebra here. That's been a struggle area for Baltimore City, but we are making a real focus there to help our students, particularly around the algebra. We know that that, just having a good, solid foundation in algebra is kind of a gatekeeper for success in college. And so that's why this is a focus area here. But this is our blueprint for success. We're doing this with our students. We're going to see more opportunities for them as they move on, again, for post-secondary college career. And so these are our focus points and our goals. So board membership, few things that you should know, this is unpaid position. It really just shows that the service that you're doing is because you have a deep care and concern for what is happening with the students of our city. And so this is on a voluntary basis. So we're very appreciative of the expertise that our commissioners bring, as well as their passion. It really does help to drive the things that are happening in our city. So that is one piece there. It can, our board currently consists of nine appointed members, which is what we're here for from the mayor's office. We also have two elected members, which are brand new to our board. They were just sworn in in this last year, so that is an addition to the board of what we've had previously. And then we also have one student member. If you've been following this, that student member now has voting rights. There's a few things that they don't vote on, but the majority of the topics that come through our new student board member, our commissioner does vote on those. We have some policies coming through at this time also around the student commissioner. And so we're really just increasing that role. And what we're seeing with that are these students who really rise to the occasion. They're extremely impressive in their knowledge of what's happening within city schools, but also what they contribute and bring. And so it's just really important to have that strong representation on the board. And, okay, so, sorry, this is the leftover slide, but this is when it changed. So in December of twenty twenty-two, we had the two elected board members just join. So that was very recent. Okay, jump back to that other slide for a moment, just to make sure we hit it. So the appointed members have three-year terms, and they could be reappointed, so they can serve two sets of three-year terms. In addition, if you were to come on midterm, you still have two additional terms after that. Elected members have four-year terms. Student commissioner is in their junior or senior year, and they could be a rising junior or senior, so they could serve up to two years. And for our quorum, we need to have seven board members prior to this. When we had ten members, we only, we needed a smaller number, but it's now raised to seven now that we have a larger board. Okay, we can jump on. Thanks. And then qualifications. So you probably read this in the application, but these are the things that we're looking for to make sure that our board is representative of the demographics of our city. And we know that different things come up within the board meetings. Folks have asked for, you know, specializations in different areas, but we really are looking to represent the different families in our city. So ensuring that we have kind of at minimum, this type of knowledge on the board is very helpful. We need folks with that business administration background so that, you know, they can help in terms of the operational side. We need folks who have backgrounds in education, because obviously we're an educational entity. So having folks with that knowledge and background has been really helpful. Parents, of course, we want to see representation from our families. And then one of the areas that we really call out are, you know, children with disabilities. And that knowledge can come as a parent or someone who's worked in that field, as well as someone who was a child with a disability. We have that on our board right now as well. So we're just making sure that we hear all of the voices of the folks that exist in our city. So the board governs by adopting policies. So if you've ever looked through our board documents, everything is policy there. I used to work for the state, so we kind of had it the opposite. We had regulations, and then we had policies that described how the regulation would be, would be implemented. So here in Baltimore City, we have policies, which are big things. And then we have a lot of regulations that show what does that look like on that day-to-day level. But the board is the one that adopts all of the policies. And you'll see the process that we go through. We have committees that they first go through. We do a lot of work on that before it ever comes to a public board meeting. Lots of questions are asked. We engage with community groups and making sure that stakeholders, that their voices are heard. I think that's a big piece, and I'm really proud to say that that's something that we do a lot in Baltimore City. It's constantly going out to our stakeholders, making sure that the policies that are being adopted are reflective of the folks that we are representing. And we have, you know, as you see here, one of the bullets, a legal obligation to make sure, and ethical one, to make sure that we're representing those folks from our district. We also do a lot of compliance reports, and what that helps with is we put policies into place. We're working them, and we're actually doing some work on that. And then let's come back and report back. That's always a really important piece. So you'll hear a lot of those. We just went through our September board meeting where a lot of those compliance reports were presented, and it shows just the growth that has happened over that time. And so those also come to the board. And go to the next slide. And then this is kind of the, this is on our website, so if you want to look deeper at this. But what happens is generally a need is identified, and that can come to the board from any variety of sources. It can come from teachers, it can come from parents, it can come from the public, from our students. Once we hear that that's a need, then we start looking at, you know, where we can address this. Again, varieties of committees that can look at it first, but we start to develop a policy or modify a policy. It's then presented. We make sure that we go again to stakeholders, gather public comments, and then address those comments. And then we have what's called a first reader. We bring it before the board. But notice all the work that has happened before it first comes to the board for that first reader. Lots of voices have been heard in it. After that first reader, you know, maybe there's more input, more public comment for it, and then we bring it back as a second reader. And then finally, it goes to a vote. But again, just pointing out the amount of work that goes into it before it ever shows up at the public. We're making sure that those that are affected by it have the chance to voice their opinions. Thanks. Accountability here, that is a large piece of what the board does. And so you'll notice there's, when policies or any discussions happen at the board, if you, you know, have been watching any of the public board meetings, you notice that there's a lot of dialogue. And the reason for this again is to make sure that the concerns, both of our board members coming with their expertise and their backgrounds, as well as just representing the different constituents out there, that they are raising those and that they're being discussed, so folks can hear that. Addition, in addition to that, just looking at our CEO, who is, you know, our highest educator in, you know, oversees a lot within our district. And it is our job, not me necessarily, because I'm the board office, but for our board to evaluate and ensure that the CEO is doing the job that, in this case, she was hired for. That's extremely important piece, holding her accountable as well. And then we also do internal audits, so we have someone on staff who does that specifically. But again, the board, this is one of the things that they hold accountable, is just making, you know, hold for accountability, ensuring that we are looking at the different systems within Baltimore City and ensuring that, you know, we're looking at them, evaluating, and making sure that if there are concerns about that, that we're addressing those. But also, are they doing a good job and then being able to make modifications as a result? We also have external auditors who come in, not just internal, but we have both of those things so that we can look at and make sure that we are doing the best job that we can with our finances here. And then also adhering to all of our strategic goals. They're talked about, if you look at every presentation, we relate anything that we're doing back to our priorities. So we're always checking ourselves. We just had a meeting talking specifically about our committees. And then always making sure that we stay aligned with what is the goal of that committee? What is the purpose? How does it relate back to our priorities? And then just always holding ourselves accountable that we are doing the work that is getting us closer to the goals and the priorities of our district. We have many meetings that help us to do the work. We have public board meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, and there's an opportunity for the public to comment. You can do that either via video or have it written and read, or you can come live. We have closed meetings where if there are particular matters that need to be discussed, we wouldn't want to do publicly, but we have the opportunity for the board to talk about. We have closed meetings. We have forums where we invite the public. They could be student forums, parent forums, general community forums. We have one coming up in October for that, and that's hearing the voices of those folks that are in our city. We also have hearings. Those are public hearings, and they're always recorded. We have special meetings, and these can be set for whatever topic is needed to be discussed at this time. And those can be called by the chair of the board as well as the CEO. We have committees again, and so we have board work sessions. Those could be committee work sessions or the board work sessions. That's to do additional work. Maybe that's outside of just a public meeting, but if there's more work that needs to be done, those are available for the board to be a part of. And then, of course, the committee meetings, which I've talked about, and I'll go more in depth on our next slides. So we have many committees. We have three standing committees that have been there. And we've also, as I mentioned earlier, included some new committees. And these were developed as a need. We heard the voices of our community, of our staff, of our students, and then create committees so that we can do the work around this. We have an audit committee that looks at, you know, just ensuring that any audit findings that were there, that we're attending to them. We have an operations committee that deals with, if you ever see any of the contracts that are coming in around, we just had one around City Springs that is about building a new school in a community that is being developed by the city. All of those go through our operations committee first so that we can really dig in and ask all the questions that need to be asked. And so anything that deals with operations goes to the committee first before it ever goes to the board. Teaching and learning is kind of self-explanatory. It deals with anything that has to do with curriculum and instruction, looking at, you know, how they qualify teachers, and just looking at instructional strategies. Next. We have our policy committee, and again, we, the governance of, you know, all of the board relies on the policies that we have for the districts. So everything, any policy that we're looking at changing, modifying, developing, goes through our policy committee, doing the work around that so that we, again, before it comes to the board, so very important work that happens there. And then we have strategic planning, and this came about as we were developing the goals within the district, changing up the priorities, just updating everything. And so this committee was started just a few years ago, but has continued because we've seen the value in it. And then I mentioned earlier, we have a safety and wholeness committee, which is new this year. So eventually, that will be added to our website, but that's just work around that as one of our goals that you saw in an earlier slide. Next. Where we house all of our documents for any and all of our meetings is in Board Docs. And there's a public version of it if you become a board member. We have administrative materials that are specific just to the board. You can search through that system. We were just talking about on an earlier meeting that it's searchable and that if we're working on something and another district somewhere else, you know, in the nation is also using Board Docs, and they're doing some work around this, we can actually see what they're also doing to help inform the work that we are, because we can build upon, you know, the great things that are happening nationally through other school systems that are similar to us. But Board Docs is a really, you know, just great place to have everything in one location. And then this is what we, you know, this is where all of our agendas minutes and other documentation is located. And community engagement, I mentioned that we have a lot of different ways that, you know, voices can be heard. We have our regular public comment during any of our public board meetings or committee meetings, and folks can sign up for that, and you'll hear, you'll hear different folks speaking. So if there's something that's important to them, they're always able to do that. We have, I mentioned forums that are coming up. We have district events. And then just any kind of stakeholder engagement that we can that gathers information from those different groups and that we're, again, incorporating that into the work that we're doing. And then we also get a lot of, you know, we work directly into the board office. We get a lot of individual correspondence, and, you know, folks have questions. They send them in, and even at the board meetings, you know, folks will come up, they're like, I just want to ask a question. I was like, you know, we always give them either this contact, or you can go on the website. I know I get a lot sent directly to me, and then we make sure that we send those off, staff provide answers. And then we are usually really good. I'm really impressed with the rate that we are able to address and answer questions that come in. But lots of different ways for our community folks to be heard, as well as to get answers. And I think we're at the end. Hopefully, I didn't take too much time. I do talk fast. So if there are any questions, just let me know.
Nope. Thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins. And again, her information is here. She can be emailed. And again, and a phone number there, so you can have any contact or information if you want to talk to the board executive, then you can reach out. So thank you so much, Dr. Jenkins, for doing that overview, extremely informative. And again, just as a reminder to all of them that have joined us, that this is being recorded, and it will live on Mayor Scott's page under Boards and Commissions, once we're all done reporting everything. So if you missed anything in part, or you just need a reminder or refresher about the priorities or anything here, then it will live on that page, and we'll make sure that we have that available on be more children dot com. I'm going to really, I'm just going to head right into, and prior to that, before I head into that, I want to go ahead and acknowledge that the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners Chair has joined us, Mr. Ronald McFadden. So I just wanted to acknowledge that he was on, joined us this evening, and when we get to Q and A, if you feel like jumping in, I know you have a lot to do. You're very busy as well. But if you ever want to make mention of anything, well, feel free to just add any of your breadth and depth of knowledge that you have, Mr. McFadden. So really quickly, I'm going to go over the requirements and the eligibility and requirements and qualifications in being considered for appointment by the mayor for a board of school commissioner seat. There are two basic requirements, which is that you have to be at minimum eighteen years old, and you have to be a Baltimore City resident. And this is really important because you, with the residency part, is something that we do take into consideration. We do want you to be a city resident, not a property owner in city, in Baltimore City, but living in another jurisdiction. This is a really important part around being able to serve and be in the seat of overseeing, you know, the things that happen with Baltimore City Public Schools and serving on the, as a commissioner. The qualifications, I do believe Dr. Jenkins went over this in depth really well. But just again, organizational management, education, parent of a child in Baltimore City Public Schools, at least my commissioner, special education, at least my commissioner. And when we talk about these things, you're talking about having knowledge and possessing certain successful administration of a large business, a nonprofit. And for our younger folks that are considering, and when I say younger adults, I'm talking maybe like eighteen to twenty-one, we are still encouraging you to apply because you, in fact, do have these qualifications, and you do actually possess these skills. So we want you, if you've been the student council president, if you've started a nonprofit in your community, if you do leadership work with a few of your friends, if you advocate for folks, like, these are all leadership skills. So we don't want anyone to shrink from thinking that, oh, I don't have the qualifications, or I don't have, you know, that certain type of job or whatever. We really want to see everyone, you know, feel confident and applying for these positions, for the spot. Another, other mayoral considerations is the experience, building partnerships, indoor community engagement, commitment to Baltimore City Public Schools, and that will be evident through the process. Collaborative, courageous leadership, put interest of students first, experience with fiscal complexities, and organizational oversight. You definitely should have knowledge of Baltimore City Public Schools. Commitment to equity, has attended Baltimore City Public Schools, and again, these are considerations. Has children or a child in Baltimore City Public Schools, has had previous experience, and brings a unique perspective to the school as well. So to the school board as well. So again, these are mayoral considerations. Again, these are mayoral considerations, but I want to, I want to just be clear that the requirements of that you are eighteen and that you are Baltimore City resident. Okay, those are the minimum qualifications. But these also, for the considerations piece, is something that we want folks to just think about. And these are the things that are at the top of mind for qualifications that we feel will make a good and well-rounded board of school commissioner. The candidate selection process is a very tedious process. You go through and Um, you go through and you apply applications. I'm sorry, my screen is not going. Applications are open through, uh, to tomorrow. Um, and then, sorry, my screen is not going because why would it not work? Why would it work when you need it to? I apologize. Um, I'm going to, let me see if I can get this. I'm sorry, because why, this is technology in its finest, but we do have to know how to pivot. I'm gonna try to stop sharing my screen and then try to reshare it again. And we'll see if that works. And if not, then I will try to continue to read through or at least, um, and again, this will be available online, so we'll continue to, uh, make sure everyone is informed. So I apologize, my apologies. And I can at least drop some of these bullet points in the chat for folks. Um, the school board applications are open now. Um, and through tomorrow being the last day that we'll like close applications. Um, the applications are going to be reviewed by the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. And that is just to verify that all applicants are eighteen years old and that they are city residents. Um, and most CFS sends recommendations, um, to the, to the candidates, to the community panel for interviews. Um, through that process, the community panel recommends finalists. Finalists then have one-on-one interviews with Mayor Scott, and then Mayor Scott will make his appointment decisions. And in this case, there are two vacancies that we currently have on the Board of School Commissioners. So we'll be trying to, hopefully we will be able to find, um, two folks that Mayor Scott will appoint um, in this particular round of applications. Um, when we talk about the community panel, the community panel, um, has representatives from several organizations throughout Baltimore City, um, including the Fund for Educational Excellence, um, Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools, the PTA Council of Baltimore City, Pazaza, um, Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City. So we do have our youth represented, um, in the community panel. Um, American, uh, the Baltimore City Public Schools Administrators Association, which is Pazaza, and the American Civil Liberties Union as well. Um, so we have a wide range of folks that make up the community panel. Um, so we are again, just in alignment with looking for a well-rounded folks to, uh, create the school board. We also have, um, identified a well-rounded board of school panel, of school panel members to make sure that they're coming with their lens and their expertise, um, as we go through this election process. So once again, I'm sorry about my camera not working, well, my screen not working at the moment, but we will make sure that you have all of that information because if technology worked perfectly, then where would we be these days? It worked perfectly all the time. Um, I also want to acknowledge, um, uh, an- another board member that is on, uh, board member Kenyatta Bay. Um, he is also online as well. Um, and, um, he also, he is one of our two, uh, elected board members, um, that we just won in earlier this year. Um, so we are gonna transition right into, um, the Q and A part. And, um, we, uh, thank graciously our sitting board commissioner, uh, Mr. Robert Sally. He will be just talking to us and we have a few questions that came in via DM and also some students had some questions. So we're gonna go ahead. Yeah, it was, they, they were great. But you know, our youth always have, to me, the best questions. So we're gonna go ahead and just allow just you to have conversation, um, and just, and, and chime in. And, and then from there, we'll see if there are any folks that have any questions that have joined us this evening. Um, but I'll go ahead and let you introduce and give us a little, I know you introduced earlier, but just a little bit of background now that we have more knowledge around, uh, the type of folks that are, that, you know, are board commissioners and the type of work, what committees they serve on. So tell us a little bit about that and then we'll start asking questions.
All right. Well, great. Um, so once again, thank you so much. It's just an honor to be here today. Um, so a little bit about my story. So I started, I have been in Baltimore City for twenty-three years. Uh, my first kind of touch points with the school system was as a teacher. Uh, so I've taught in three city schools, so at Booker T., um, Patterson Park, uh, Public Charter School, um, as well as New Era Academy that just closed this past school year. And so I've had that wealth of touchpoints with youth across a variety of ages, different neighborhoods and families. Um, I did leave city schools, um, and had an opportunity to go and have a policy career, uh, which is what I do in my professional life, um, outside of the board. Uh, what that means is I work on school accountability, so really looking nationally how schools perform. Um, and what is kind of the, the opportunities for school improvement, um, as kind of states work in partnerships with uh, school districts and families to really focus on those opportunities for school improvement. So a lot of different school models that, um, I've seen. Um, and I get to leverage that, um, in a way in which helps me think about, uh, Baltimore City and like other ways in which we've seen it in partnership um, with Dr. Santa Lisa's who is in charge of the day-to-day management of city schools. Um, so I was sworn in February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. So that's real easy for me to remember that. I always remember that. Um, the process that two, 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 two. Um, so the process is really long, but it's your opportunity at different stages to really talk about what your commitment is, right? So I, I know when I started off in this process, I had um, an idea of kind of things I really wanted to focus on. And I think at every stage, um, of the process, it helped me be really clear about my North Star, like my why, in terms of why I wanted to serve. Recognizing this is an unpaid position, but I really kind of, eh, I still remain very focused and centered around students and families and all of my decisions. Uh, but what this also has given me an opportunity by joining the board is to open up my perspectives as I've spent a lot of time getting to know the strengths and opportunities of my fellow board members, the strengths and opportunities of all of our city schools in terms of what they offer our, our young people as far as education. And the opportunity to work with a variety of interest holders, both our students, um, families, um, nonprofits and other organizations that really are here to all support, um, the health and vitality of the city of Baltimore and recognizing that there is a very symbiotic relationship between city schools, um, and the city of Baltimore. Um, and my first year, um, had a fantastic first year on the board. So a couple of things. So, um, I was the acting chair of the policy committee, um, in my very first year, um, which was a remarkable opportunity to kind of leverage my background in policy formation and policy development on the national level. Um, and I also served as the chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, um, as well. And this year I'm continuing on as the chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, I've served on audit, um, and a couple of the ad hoc committees as well. So a good swath of committees. So it's an opportunity to really contribute at policy development and policy formation throughout all of our different committees, um, as, uh, Dr. Jenkins explained, before they come before, um, the board for our very first decision. Um, and so I'm gonna stop there in my story and like, let's take a couple of questions because I know we have a time.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So the first, uh, question I think is really aligned with what you were just sort of talking about. And one of the, the questions from one of our youth, one of our high schoolers, and I'm just gonna say, do you have a regular job? What the question is, how many hours a week does it take you for you to be a Board of School Commissioner? They want to know if you have a regular job.
I do.
You talked about all these committees that you're on and you lead in head. So I think this is a great question.
It's a fantastic question. Yeah. So just like everybody, you know, um, every adult has got to think about how to really provide for themselves and for their families. So I do have a regular forty-hour a week job, forty on paper, but, um, I'm a management consultant, uh, which oftentimes is way more than forty hours a week. And so I do travel pretty extensively for my job. And so, um, while that may take up, you know, fifty, sixty hours per week, um, the school board in and of itself has a lot to prepare for. So there is that expectation. There are very high expectations for each board member to make sure that they're prepared for each committee meeting, each public board meeting, each family forum. That takes a lot of reading. It takes, uh, meeting with our interest holders, our state, various stakeholders across the city, um, as well as thinking through like questions that you have so that you come in prepared to have a real dialogue between, um, city school staff as well as, as the public. And so I would say on average, you know, on a small week, um, like just school visits too. That's probably like the funnest part of my job is.
I was just about to ask about that. I was like, I think the school visits are also, I think, like a great way to continue to ground yourself in your why. Um, like to be able to go see, you know, the, the, the youth that you impact through decision-making, policymaking, having meetings and things, putting names to face and faces to just unknown names and school leaders, principals, not just the youth, but everyone who really makes that school building run. Um, so like, how do you, like, I know you said you like a lot of hours, but, and I'm gonna kind of loop the next question because the next question was, what is something that you wish you knew before you became a Board of School Commissioner? So was it something that like sticks out to you was like, well, if I had known this, then I, I either would have been better off or I would have planned better or like what?
So I'm a policy guy, right? So like I have a new policy on the national level for a really long time. So, you know, at the national level, like policy can be very removed from the day-to-day operations of schools. So what this has given me an opportunity, um, especially this is my, um, so I concluded, uh, my first term. This is my, I'm getting sworn, I just got sworn in for my second term on the board, um, which I'm really excited about. So this will be my first three-year term. Um, but it is where the rubber meets the road, like inside of our school buildings, right? So the, the chance to talk to school leaders, educators, um, students and families about their experience, about their touchpoints with the system is where it helps you to have a reality about what the experience is like for young people. And so, you know, um, and I, I think to answer your question, well, I think, um, the biggest aha for me is I've spent time in various schools across the city is there's no monolithic experience for any of our students. So while we may have uh, very high expectations for, um, our school leaders and our students, um, we, I, I can say I have learned firsthand that like not all of our students experience school in the same way. And so that gives me something to strive for in terms of understanding how to level the playing field, um, and, and focus on equity, which is a big, big topic of conversation.
It is. It's a, it's like a buzzword, but I know that it's both are really like digging deep to really, you know, to act, put some action around, like just not the, the word or the phrase, but actually like putting action around it and that's.
But it's moving from like conversation to action, right? And I think that's something that Baltimore City Public Schools and the city of Baltimore has done a phenomenal job of making sure, you know, we understand, you know, what the opportunity is as well as what the challenges are for our young people and how do we close that gap? And I think that partnership between Baltimore City Public Schools, um, the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners as well as the Mayor's Office of Children and Families is, is just a really seamless integral process that we're really working towards building those bridges to serve our young people. I love that. So
Yeah.
Really realize that's how invested everybody really is. A thousand percent every day, all day.
Yes. Um, so one question that, you know, and this was, and again, this, this came from another, another student, a senior. Um, are you concerned about all the news around our math test scores for our city school students? How do you and other members address something like that?
I am. Like, I, I'm gonna be very honest with you. And so, you know, my background around school accountability and what I do on my nine-to-five every day has really helped states and, and districts think about these performance measures. Um, that keeps me up at night, right? Like it keeps me up when I see that, like, you know, a lot of our young people um, are not having the opportunity to achieve and excel at high levels. And so, um, you know, my role as the chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, as Dr. Jenkins was pointing out earlier about our board goals, helps us to kind of really put the focus on, on these numbers and making sure that we're, as we're working in collaboration with the CEO and her staff, um, who are responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city schools, is talking about where our schools are at. Um, so when I first arrived, um, in this role in the seat, um, um, and it is way different than being a teacher in the system. And so, um, and the governance, you know, we had three goals. And so the adoption of the math goal um, was our, um, opportunity to really say, this is important. This is, you know, when we're, we're working on how that relates to, um, supporting the CEO and, and making sure the investments are where they need to be to support our young people and recognizing that coming out of a pandemic that, um, that has had a tremendous adverse effect. So
Absolutely.
We're still coming out of the pandemic, but like, it is go time in terms of making sure that like we are moving, um, expeditiously and with a sense of purpose around those math goals. So it keeps me up every single day because I want to make sure that every student, each and every one of our seventy-eight, seven, seventy-eight thousand scholars um, are, are proficient in math. So we've got work to do.
Yeah. I, I always feel like we're, we're living through it and talking about it at the same time, you know, eh, that what's, what's happening. Um, there was a question that came in the chat and I'm not, if you want me to get, um, this, uh, constituent's question. They inquired about a Fed staffing model survey about schools and families and just maybe like sped things.
You know, so I'm not as familiar with that. I can't speak eloquently about that today. Um, so why, um, our Dr. Jenkins is here from our board office. She can take that question, um, and can run, um, to her constituent and make sure.
Okay. And I'll make sure that, you know, you, you get your information, um, or, or Ms. Goodwin. I believe, I want to say Ms. Goodwin if I, hopefully I'm addressing your pronouns correctly, um, that, that, um, we can, if you want to drop your email here. If you, if I can, or I can add Dr. Jenkins', uh, email address to this so that you can get your, your question followed up quickly. Um, we have a little bit under like ten minutes left. Um, so I want to just sort of just open up to if there are any additional, uh, the board members, our board chair, um, that want to just make any additional comments, um, while we're on, um, just to add for considerations. Um, or maybe if anyone wanted to do almost that, like that last PSA nudge, um, that's for anyone who was on the board or like on the, like right on the edge of the cliff to be like, I really want to do this, but I just don't know. Or, you know, I don't think I have all the experience or I'm not really certain, you know, uh, if, if this is, you know, right for me or it seems like it's going to be a lot of time, but I feel like I might have a lot to offer. Um, I just, you know, what, what would maybe almost be like, you know, Commissioner Sally or anyone, like what would be like your thing? What to sort of tell folks to encourage them to finish that application and turn it in, um, for consideration?
So here's my biggest piece of advice, right? So service, like standing up to the call of leadership through volunteerism is absolutely a tremendous and humbling opportunity to give back to your community. Um, it's very selfless, right? So recognizing that, um, in order for our community to be strong, in order for our young people to have the education that they do deserve, we really do need a variety of perspectives. So like as Dr. Jenkins went through, um, I'm sorry, Noel also went through all of their qualifications and preferred considerations. Um, those are ways in which like we're, we're able to have a variety and diverse set of experiences at the table, right? Um, so, you know, I, I think about, you know, in the twenty-three years I've lived in Baltimore City, um, you know, my life has changed a lot over that time. My touchpoints with city schools has tur- cha- changed over that time. Um, I love the fact that every time I go somewhere, people do recognize that I'm on the board. They want to talk to me about their child's experience or a young person will want to talk to me about, um, their child's experience. Or I had a young person come up to me and said, I saw you at my school a couple of weeks ago, uh, for opening school day. Um, you, that says I'm here, I'm contributing to like making our community better. So, um, it is the ultimate call of leadership. So I encourage you to get in your application. I'm actually gonna share my email in the chat because I know we won't have time for everybody's question. And sometimes the questions, um, also come a little bit later as you're thinking about it. So feel free to email me and I'm happy to reach out, um, and share my perspective.
Oh, we, we appreciate you so much, um, for, for doing that and sharing your contact information. Um, we are a little bit under six thirty, but there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. If, uh, if there are no other board commissioners or our board chair that wants to make any additional comment for this evening, um, then, oh, Chair McFadden, yes, Chair McFadden has raised his hand. I'm gonna go ahead and, and let you wrap this up appropriately. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity, um, to, to share. And thank you to the commissioners that are here. And thank you to our community members, um, who are interested in perhaps joining our board or just want to learn more about what, um, we do for the sake of our city. What I will say is that all of the members of our board, um, are invested in some way, shape or form into the betterment of our city. Um, and so it is a labor of love, right? Um, there are diverse perspectives as should make up the board because we all, again, have a piece of this city in our hearts. And so I would encourage folks that are considering applying to go ahead and do it, right? Go ahead and apply. Go ahead and put your, um, hat in the ring to serve because that's what it is. Um, it's not about, um, and as we've mentioned multiple times tonight, it certainly is an unpaid labor of love. Um, currently, and of course, there are, uh, work groups and legislation looking at how our board can be compensated in the future. But we do this because we love our city. And so that person, that is who the board is looking for to really, uh, impact the lives of not just our young people, but generations as, as Congressman Cummings would say, generations that are yet un- unborn, right? What we do today are impacting not just where we are right now, um, but generations to come. So thank you to the, the Mayor's Office of Children and Families. Um, thank you to our board office team who's done, um, an incredible job tonight in presenting, um, for all of the work that you all are doing. Thank you. Um, and for everyone else, please have a good evening, stay safe, and please apply to our board.
I could not think of a better way to, uh, end this information session. Thank you so much, uh, Chair McFadden for your words, but more than that, more importantly, thank you so much for your leadership. You know, it, it is not lost on us, just know that, how hard you work and, and your dedication to children of Baltimore city. So we thank you very much and we thank everyone on the board. We thank everyone who has joined. Commissioner Sally, thank you so much. Thank you for recommitting yourself to this charge for another three years. We are very excited. Thank you so much to the constituents that have joined us. And if you happen to see a recording of this, thank you so much for taking your time to just get, glean and gain more information around the Board of School Commissioners. Thank you so much to Dr. Jennifer Jenkins. Thank you so much to Nisha Moore, Commissioner Kenyatta Bay for joining us. And thank you to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success Team, the best agency there is in Baltimore as far as I am concerned. Don't tell anybody I said that. And, but thank you all so much. Have an amazing evening and we hope to see your applications and we hope to see all of you soon while we get to this next round. Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you all.